Once at 5:30, was it going to be a total meeting to order? Mike, is you or Cheryl have something you wanted to start with?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. So, there's a couple of things. We had to have the resolutions to am by when Friday at lunchtime. So, there's some items that I would like to have some clarification on and maybe some clarification that we kind of like touched base on last time, but I have a lot written down and I just want to make sure I do it correctly. So, the first thing we want to talk about is last week Seth did a presentation and there were some things later that we found out in that presentation that were kind of confusing or interpreted in different ways. So, please don't touch base on that first.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county staff, just wanted to make one more clarification about the personal property tax rate. So, when I was doing the presentation last week, what we were, what I was talking about, if you lower the personal property tax rate, we were not only talking about personal vehicles, but we were including with that business use vehicles. That is a separate entity to us or separate class of property to us in the Commissioner's office than business equipment. And that may not have been clear and I can understand. It was not clear, so that's just, you know, just wanted to make that point for clarification that business use vehicles would, will be getting, assuming you do lower the rate, the personal property rate, they will also get that. The only thing that the business use vehicles will not get is by classification, they're not able to receive personal property tax relief. So, they wouldn't, they wouldn't get that, but of course, personal vehicles would. So, just want to make that clear. If that is clear, if you have any follow-up questions, Mr. President.
Just to be clear, so a vehicle's a vehicle, whether it's personal or business, if we lower the rate, it applies to both?
It applies to both, at least in my mind. That's the way we treat it in the Commissioner's office. And the other thing I would just add and say too was that they're affected by me and just like everything else, right? So, it makes sense, right? So, that, that's why, that's part of the reason why as well.
Thank you.
And if I may, just to make sure everyone's in touch, I believe our numbers were calculated that way, so them, they were given, include that.
Right, correct. That's right.
So, we go with that?
Well, Mr.?
Okay.
Mr. O'Connell? I guess the U.N.S. Bill 1239, I think was the, it does allow for separation, which is the whole idea behind that bill particularly for business vehicles. What percentage of the population of your data is business vehicles? Percentage or numbers?
Let's see. I don't know the percentage calculator, but I can tell you like that. I don't, I'm not sure how it would, how it's best to handle this, but probably if you gave me five minutes to sit here and calculate, I'd probably tell you that in about five minutes or less and maybe you want to move on, but I mean, I got the numbers, so I have to do on math.
So, Mr. Treasurer? So, maybe I misunderstood what the legislation was about. So, we can also break out business vehicles as business equipment. So, we could have, is it two classes? So, you can have this vehicle either be part of the vehicles class or part of the business equipment class.
That's my interpretation of it. The Commissioner may have other, but when I read that in the legislation, that's what it does. You feel that it includes business use vehicles is what you're saying? I would defer to the county attorney for that, sure. I mean, we can read it and it's been signed, so it is, it is what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thatcher, I have you on that to calculate. As far as documents, I'd like to see skip property tax relief for both business owners and individuals for their vehicles. We have some small businesses that are struggling or shut down in a different trade. Issues over the past couple of years, I think it's unfair that we make it across the board, make it as easy on your own as possible and move forward, but that's just my little thing.
Right, right. And I think, I think that's a fair point and I think, you know, what the Treasurer's saying is, you know, depending on the interpretation, I guess we'll wait to see what Roger has to say about that. But my interpretation looking at it was that these, these properties are classed for us as 21s and 22s, that's our classes for those, that they would, they would also get it like all of the other personal property, so.
Looking at it real quick, it looks like it's all automobiles irrespective of business or personal.
That's all that.
Last week, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, I'm in favor of reducing the personal property rate, but the question I had and I had spoken to Mr. Thatcher about was regarding the abatements in his office. And so, I want to be sure that when we've calculated that abatement rate, we haven't done it on both sides. It hasn't been calculated on the revenue side and the finance department and you haven't calculated it in your, on your determination of that $0.0423. So, I want to make sure we're not counting it twice and making sure that there's no, there's nothing wrong with this number.
So, I can talk about what I've done. So, we received this red state from Seth and basically we backed into what the revenue authority table that says Linda are national work, which limits your national work because it is, I mean, it's going to kind of cap it out unless you have a supplement. Throughout the year, we do supplements to add to the rolls and we do abatements which take. In the past, the supplements have been greater than the abatements. That was what we considered normal. We're here because normal doesn't apply anymore. And the 423 doesn't really give you any flexibility for things that could happen or moving, a moving item that you didn't take into account.
Such as?
Such as you have something on in the value vote that he has that should not be there or you have an inaccurate value. You have something valued instead of $10,000, an extra zero on it.
Okay.
Or it shouldn't have been there in the first place, it should have been in the city of Winchester. Any of those, any of those items have not been taken into account.
Would those, even if we let the rate where it is, we would still have that same risk as far as those?
You would. I mean, it would be less of a risk because you're, you're not trying to roll back a rate that set your.
At least in this situation, valuation is going to be the same regardless of what rate it applies, so if there's errors there, either way.
That's right.
One more question. The last, next number of years that you've been here, have you seen that a lot or has it been less than Blue Moon or any idea of how consistent or not consistent has been where there's been a error of fact? Where it did, where it's made a difference?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, those kinds of things happen as a routine part of business. I mean, we discover things that, you know, are in, that should be in Winchester City. I mean, that's the, you know, advice of, so, I mean, so we're, you know, moving, moving things around like that as we discover those problems and issues that they can, they arise for a number of different reasons, but.
Does it make a difference? The total dollars coming out of each, is that a quarter of a percent or 10%?
My opinion, my opinion, it doesn't, you know, I think maybe a bit of spoken to tonight about it, I mean, you may want to build into this a little bit of a buffer. I mean, I was asked to provide a minimum neutral rates and that's, you know, a frequent number scenario is, you know, you might want to provide yourself a three or five or 10 cent buffer, you know, just to kind of, but I would say those have been taken into account. And then I just wanted to answer Mr. O'Connell's question. I mean, what I, what I put a quick calculation here, it looks to me like the business use vehicles are about 10% of the total of, you know, all vehicles in accounting, it's important to have seen annual values, so. About roughly, about 10%. So, 99% of the vehicles are personal, we're not seeing the overall plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add in very quickly. We've done a lot of work on this, Seth has done a great job looking at this, Cheryl's reviewed it and I reviewed it. We feel fairly confident about the estimate, but I want to put a caveat on in there. First of all, this is new, we haven't done this before, so it's a new process. What we're doing is we are using estimates and there's the unknown, it's supplements and abatements. So, although we feel confident about this number, as the board realizes, there is a possibility if it come in under or if it come over, that if this board wanted to add a, push that stuff to the board, there's just no way to go forward. There are some unknown variables to move forward.
Okay. May I ask her?
So, that brings to the next question. When we, do you have another question? Well, I just want to make sure that we, you and Cheryl, I'm assuming, it sounds like from Mr. Ballpawper's comments, you compared notes and we had a double comment on the rate.
No, correct.
That is correct. Okay. That gives me some comfort. Thank you.
So, did you hear a consensus?
So, as far as the rate?
Yes.
So, that's my next question.
Okay.
And current, last, last, last week, we talked about scenario A, which was a rate of 4.23. So, I want to make sure that I have four votes for that.
I'm a big pro for maintaining that 4.23 that we talked about last time.
It's three.
Yes.
I'm in C, so.
Yes, I'm.
There's, there's four.
I have four?
Yes.
All right. So, the next thing that we, that we touched on last, last week, or Mike talked about the positions. And so, if there needs to be any additional conversation, who would I change?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, as you remember, I sent out a, the document, there were on the list of positions I was recommending, just about information on that. We also had what's in the budget book, which has more positions included in that. And I would also like to say is, I actually had a subsequent conversation with the commissioner of revenue and he's put up a pretty good defense on his side about adding positions to my recommendation list on assessors. Bring that up to my discussion of honor, the argument that was is that they currently have six positions. They have five of them out of field and they have, their workload is increasing, company in 2012, there was 1,045 billion, 1,045 assessments that were, really permits that required an assessment and today's it's up to almost 2,000. So, that number's gone up significantly. For just a little history, the county took in-house doing the assessments in 2007, they initially went with six positions. Shortly thereafter, I think within a year, they went up to seven, then the recession hit, so they went back down to six. So, there's a fairly good argument for that. I would argue if this board decides to go with the recommendation list I made, I would have to make an argument that you may want to keep some money. We have some money in that contingency that in the future, if we can justify it, come back to this board at a later date to make arguments for those positions if they were justifiable. As I said at the last meeting, we were looking at communications where they requested two positions. Our recommendation was wait and see how well they're doing, if it functions better, the new supervisor position filled and then determine if indeed we would go with the recommendation list. I recommend, I would also say worthwhile to keep in mind, keep contingency fund or have the ability to go with that contingency fund during the year and come back to this board if we can justify or recommend any of those other positions.
I, for one, would support both of those positions now.
I don't, I don't know that about the two positions based on what you've just shared to say yesterday, but I'm not opposed to it until I have more information. But I'll just reiterate one of the comments I made last time. If we were to fund fully your slated positions that you put forward, do you feel confident that we could sit down with the various departments like the fire department, possibly sheriff's department, have more in discussions on policy and think about the way that I mentioned last, you feel that that would be done sometime in the future?
Absolutely. I think it's critical, especially with the fire department because you know you're going to. Especially with the fire department, as you look at, have a big expansion, go over by volunteer, do a paid department, I think that's critical. And as you know, I'm a hard one, I think the sheriff's department's looking for significantly more positions, but I think it needs very good justification and wanting to justify it in the meeting would be definitely a good thing to do.
So, that in case of justifications are necessary, would it make sense to go ahead and approve these, withhold the money until justifications, if it's similar to what you 've mentioned on these other two programs that we, if those justifications come through, we have it, they're ready to go versus going ahead and approve?
So, I'm here to approve the ones on the recommendation list and then consider the other ones with a better justification.
So, you're saying the other ones, you weren't referring to the ones that we discussed previously?
Other comments?
Possibly, what would the additional cost be for the increase in this position revenue?
I believe that's a number of about $75,000.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's roughly correct. All right. I think that's roughly correct.
Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For two years, I've been asking the fire rescue office to meet with us to lay out the revenue recovery, how that is being dispersed and how we can maybe justify higher, we'll bring on personnel because careers now up here, you're running a significantly higher volume of calls than what they had when the program started. Since the program started, we have added fuel compensation to the companies, we've added insurance compensation to companies. And for some companies, we've added 100% call line response by career personnel to the, to the mix. We've also added two, two physical buildings that we own and I have been flat out, right? Told the people that meet with us as a group, I told the whole group, or at least four of us as a group, want to meet for fire rescue to discuss a change of the revenue recovery. So, I can't justify giving fire and rescue another die for personnel until they're willing to at least sit down and have a discussion on how that revenue recovery line is being spent. If you own the building, which we do it around Hill and Bill station, if you are paying for the personnel, which we are, we're paying for the staff and there's localities, we're paying for the fuel, if we're paying for the insurance, the only thing we're not paying for is the vehicle. And the vehicle's about $300, $350,000 total cost. Everything else, just staff, personnel, the staff, that piece of apparatus is well over $350,000 a year. The county is picking up the line of share. I'm all for, maybe I misunderstood that here, but I'm all for approving the positions, but holding the funds until we're able to have a meeting and have those discussions. Because I believe it's important we have those discussions before we continue to sell money at a supposed problem. It's been two years since we made, same with the sheriff's office. If you look, there was an email I sent to everyone that showed what we were paying per capita for law enforcement in the county. If you look at Rockingham County this year, they're paying $78 per capita for law enforcement services in county Rockingham. They've been against us and they have a city in the center of their county, they're similar in size to us, and they have a college that is actually a little bit larger than ours, quite right in the middle of the city. So, they are a good basis point to look at. If we look at Shenandoah County, which is the county between them and us, they're somewhere in the middle of 170. If I look at the sheriff's budget properly today, we're 213, which is around or maybe a little higher than Loudoun County. So, I think we need to have some justification as to why more personnel is, in addition to the non-alien communication center. I'm fully in favor of adding a communications officer, not supervisor, supervisor. But I would also encourage this board to allow them to over-hire by one. They haven't been fully staffed, as near as I can tell, in 10 years. So, if they get full staffing and we add a supervisor and we allow them to keep one position in their pocket, over-hire one position, if we get somebody who retires from Fairfax, you allow them, who wants to come here, then our director would have that position in their pocket to hire and have good seats in personal board. But I cannot support the additional personnel as presented. Thank you.
Mike?
I asked Mr. Mashack, so I'll say a lot of you, I asked Mr. Mashack to come and do a presentation. He gave me, he gave the volunteer fire association, I'll let you know, if they can on response times, on equipment, on, we didn't, we're going to add a response times, and these are constations, but in an urban area, the response time's on 10 minutes. In a rural area like Reduggett, it's response time is 15 or 16 minutes. If you have a situation in Sartanery, you have a situation on the rental store, there's a heart attack, units are gone, a second heart attack, a second fire set is going to be responded from, you know, from Gatesboro. And that's a tight situation. So, the question is, what do we collectively want to do with that? I think the eight positions are necessary to keep the current response times, but you know, it's a national standard for worlds, national standard for cities, for suburban. So, I think that makes good sense. I asked Mr. Mashack to go and see if he can do that next month or so, if you're all going. And he said he is. So, Mr. Reamer, I would say that everybody has to say, in that same conversation, we can have policy discussions on one of the issues that, you know, you're concerned about, on the reimbursement of the two stations we're on. I think those are all good policy discussions and I favor that and I support that conversation. But I think that right now, hiring those additional eight, which will take effect in January, so it's not a June hire, it's a January hire, makes good sense. If we can't come to an agreement, then I would suggest that we have a, put some on the books, if you will, go through the discussion, discussion, the sharing, you know, sometime between now and, you know, January and then collectively we make a decision. I think that to meet the fire rescue requirements, I think you need to have those people come aboard in January. And so, Mr. Reamer, I appreciate your comments on trying to get responses and I think we can work together to address some policy decisions. I think everybody here has had that policy discussion. I mean, this is the one where you live, you know, it's appropriate to have, you know, 10 days for fixment, I mean, just not particularly, but Bob, same thing, Chuck, same thing. So, that's a type of response that collectively we need to do. We had a 20,000 person, you know, increase in the last, you know, several years, 36 years, you can't do that. So, that's my comment on that. Mr. Reamer, on the sheriff's issue, if the cost is definitely higher, I would like to see the difference on why, the difference between Rockingham and here. I mean, that's a valid point. And we have, I think, 149 people in the sheriff's office, but not all deputies, some are administrator. But I'd be glad to go through that conversation, say what's the difference between Rockingham, what's the difference between Loudoun? And I think that's a fair, good analysis, but not fair conversation. I'll be glad to have that conversation, I think that would be appropriate.
Other comments, anyone? I think I heard the board or positions as recommended by the administrator. Is that objection? Okay. Does that help? Cheryl?
It does. And I think that we'll work on trying to get your meeting scheduled to talk about like the recovery.
And so, I'd like to suggest that we have two meetings, one with fire rescue for all this and that fire rescue meeting will probably be one in 45 minutes. I mean, when Mashack went through, it was a long meeting, it was a detailed meeting and I think just look forward, take the time to do that, I'll just suggest that. Then two, have the same meeting with the sheriff and it's not complicated, it's not adversarial, it's simply here's what these numbers are, what's there and then you walk through, you know, the lovely numbers to see where you're at. Thank you.
I didn't say it was agreement or disagreement because I'm kind of in the middle, I'm not either opposed to nor in favor of because there are some positions that I question, especially with the sheriff's department, like the extra investigator. For three years, I've asked, you know, we had an investigator, he's working on federal cases, helping defend, so I'd like to get more information on what that entails, you know, are we getting fully reimbursed for our work on that? What is the impact on our community? We haven't really gotten clear answers on that. So, I am, I would lean more towards having money set aside for us to have meetings and then be able to, months later, if we can, another question I have is a more legal question. If, and I don't believe the meetings aren't happening because I believe that if Mike says these meetings are happening, he's going to make them happen for us. But if for whatever reason the meetings didn't happen and the positions are funded in January, are we able to claw that back if these, for whatever reason these meetings didn't happen under warranty events that, yes?
And if I may, just for clarification, right here, we scheduled a, scheduled meeting for fire rescue to answer these questions and do a full presentation, do the same thing for sheriff's department. As you know, the recommendations for the public safety communications, my recommendation was to wait and see how they're operating in full staff and with that new supervisor in place and then do a reassessment and at that point in time, bring those positions back. And I feel like the other positions that we had here in this recommendation list, I think had fairly good justifications and I don't think there were, I don't hear many issues with those other positions.
And that's the consensus I think we're at at the moment, still?
And then I'll just add to that, you know, address Sean's comments about policy discussions. So, when we have these two meetings, put a session in there for policy discussions. Like we talked about the two stations we own, I think it's a valid conversation, we can just, we can have that conversation.
Okay. We ready to move forward? Mr. Chairman?
Okay. The last thing on my list is the budget funding scenario page.
Mr. Chairman?
Don't.
Before we get into discussion then?
Yes.
I have a meeting with the financial chair of the school division, I'd just share Bill 30, so I'll just, at that meeting, I can add some color to the discussion. Okay, good with that?
Okay. Yes, yes.
So, Brian Hester and I met yesterday around lunchtime. First, I want to thank him for taking the time to do it. I felt overall it was a good meeting, it was very frank, candid, and I felt it was a step in the right direction. Just to give you a real quick synopsis of what we discussed, I started the conversation with sending him Blaine's numbers from prior meetings, so if you can take a look at that prior to our meeting and kind of digest that and come back to us with some comments. So, right off the bat, he acknowledged that there's quite a jump in the school's budget between 2012 and the current budget. He pointed to the fact that there is, was 24% inflation over that period, which Blaine did have his, his double as well. He did point out though, however, that there are quite a few state mandates that have come into play since 2012. That's money that we cannot not spend, we have to fund those things. He wasn't able to articulate what all of those are, but he did say that he'd be willing to come back to us with more information on what those mandates look like, so we have a better idea of what has been added to the requirements for us to spend as a school division for the last 10 years that we have no choice but to pay. He said, so he did come in to work to give us more information on the scope of those mandates. Additionally, he pointed out that the schools have hired 300 additional employees over that past 10 years, I believe, most of what I talked about was in the email that I forwarded to all of you that he had sent to us. And that we opened an additional elementary school during that time as well, which required his additional personnel overhead that added to the costs over above the natural increases. He wasn't able to sort of key in on exactly where the overall increases are, but he said he's willing to work with us on that. And the on-budget items that we discussed, he indicated that there is a desire amongst several of the school board members to add an additional pre-K classroom, but at this time, they lack the actual classroom space and the supply chain issues are making it difficult for them to get things like playground equipment and things like that, so that's a big table. He did point out though, that the overall cost of running a pre-K classroom has come down since it was initially instituted. I mean, to get the first classroom, cost was somewhere in the range of about $1.7 million and the current cost to operate five classrooms is about $6.1 million. He indicated that, I brought up school maintenance because that's always been an issue that's been raised during the budget discussions. He indicated his feeling is that the maintenance is being addressed, that things like the James Wood situation and hollow situation are beyond maintenance, there are issues of, you know, especially any hollow, not being built properly by the contractor and proper potential oversight at the time that those were being built, which is unfortunate, but it's not symptomatic of anything that's current order, having to do with since of so long. He also said that he felt that a lot of the maintenance issues came about during the discussion regarding the A L R discussion and that there might be some public outcry about maintenance that he felt was overblown and just wasn't true. He invited me to walk through the schools, which I'll take him up when I'll walk through the schools, and he said he'd show me around to assure us that the maintenance is being taken care of. So, I'm part of the fact that we're going to continue that conversation on maintenance because I know that's a big question under our capital maintenance questions. He indicated that state funding is tied to certain SOQ requirements, some of which are mandates, that was in the email that I forwarded to. He's not able yet to tell me what those mandates are or if we have any new mandates. I know there was potential legislation for at least one new mandate coming through the legislature regarding school nurses, but Frederick County already meets that standard anyway, so it wouldn't have any impact on Frederick County because we already have nurses in our schools. So, it wouldn't be any additional money. nurses in our schools. So it wouldn't be any additional money. So that being said, any additional money's coming from the state at this point, unless there are additional mandates coming in, would actually be additional funding that could be used by the school system, because we're already meeting the SOQ standards under the current budget. When all is said and done, I felt like it was a good conversation. He basically said he would put in as much time as necessary to continue the discussion, provide information. So he and I both have locked off the next Tuesday of every week to have continued discussions, to answer questions, bring any more information forward. So I hope to continue the discussion so that if we all have any, if you want me to discuss with them, or if we want to have additional discussions with the school board, either he or I can play any role in making that happen. I'm happy to just go through that. Thanks.
Any comments? I think we're scenarios.
I think there are some comments.
Mr. McCarthy, did I hear you correctly, that you said the pre-K was 1.7 in the first year and 6.1 now?
So then, I, yes. So I wrote this down, I know certain conversation, I did follow up with Mr. Hester again today to confirm that. I also, in a conversation with the school board chairman, confirmed the 6.1 figure. He couldn't confirm the 1.7. We did confirm the 6.1.
We're the only one who's here, Mr. Chairman. If you remember, some of us were here as a school board, I think, all new except for one member. So I think the only member that's still on the school board from 2017, when we were discussing this, was Mr. Blaine. But I think most of us were here. And if you remember, the initial request was for about $285,000 of federal grant money for two years. And then later in the year, they came back for additional $500,000. And we supported that, one of the three, I opposed that, but it passed one of three. And the question was asked, the chairman and superintendent, of what happens with the federal money? If the federal money is not renewed, so it's a two-year grant, and it was unknown at that time whether the federal money would be renewed or not. And I understand that it was not renewed. So the initial year was like $800,000 at best. And then Mr. Angelo was asked the question, what's year two? And he thought it was going to be less than $800,000. We couldn't give a dollar, and we said we took care of the playground issues, we took care of some other issues, so it'll come down. So 1.7 figure, that's stunning to me. If that's one of the 6.1 money, that's also a huge, huge amount. I mean, you certainly make the comments that, in my opinion, as a taxpayer, the schools want to be able to fund 13 school buses. That's $1.4 million. This is $6 million. And there was a commitment by the school board to come back to us, to ask for additional money if they went through that. And so I just have to honor that, you know, commitment. You were there, or most of you were there. This was in October 2017. And, you know, we had a long discussion on that. It was a cordial, civil discussion. Some of us just agreed to disagree. It was a, we were trying to solve problems. And so that's, that's a stunning figure to me. So I, you know, I've asked for budgets from the schools. And so, Mr. McCarthy, if you just would like to get Mr. Hester, I'd like to see a budget. I want to go through the numbers, it's taxpayer dollars. All of us have an obligation to do the best dollars, which is what we have. We all have a road problem. In the conversation, I forget with whom, it was Mr. Ballhopper or somebody else, the total cost of where to do Route 37 bypasses in East Passau. Or if we don't do that, we just have to deal with the roads on an increased population, which right now is 90,000, expecting about 100, 200. We just don't do that. In the next 20 years, we're talking about something close to a billion dollars. That's huge. And so how do we address that? I mean, Fairfax here has local taxes, state taxes, we can get some federal taxes by calling it interstate versus a road, I mean, lots of stuff. But we just have some issues. And I'm just sharing my thoughts on how to address that, take the best use of dollars. I mean, every person here would like to have a kid get 800 or 750 interstate keys. Every person here, I think, that says, my kid doesn't want to go to college, but he's a great electrician, Frank Palmer, Frank Carpenter, have a skill set, he can walk out and say hi. You don't need to be, I don't need to be a master electrician, I already am. I'm 18 years old, I'm just fat, I'm just my subject. That'd be great. So I'm just looking for Mr. McCarthy for data that we can just go through. And the taxpayer, they ought to see that data. And if it's good data, we're fine. I had somebody say to me, Blaine, I'm not going to show you the data, because if I do, you can cut the budget. I said to that person, no, I'd just like to see the data. If you have the cure for cancer, the cure for heart attacks is great, but just show us to us. So when you have your conversations with Mr. Hester, I'll just encourage you to be able to go back. It was a conversation. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McCarthy, thank you so much for the evening with Mr. Hester, probably going through through the weeds there. I don't know what I don't know. And that is a big question mark for me. I asked a week ago to avoid this request for a line item budget. And I received confirmation today at about 1:30, that there wasn't a line item budget to be presented to me. So my question is, how did they arrive with the figure which they gave us for a request? If they're not allowed out of budget, how did they come to that number? Is it simply they threw some number in the conference and said, yeah, that's good enough? Or how exactly did they get there? The $6.1 million to me is absolutely stunning. How much additional money is out there that's being spent on things that this board may or may not approve? Example, the, the EDC program that I was told on multiple occasions, we're not using any local dollars, I only find the four years that they were. Obviously, the pre-K issues, the school's security officers, when the SROs came in. There's just so many different question marks that I've yet to see any form data on. When we talk about seeing the looks and that everything is there, Mr. Hester said that everything was there, we could see it online. I went to looking it online today, and there was nowhere that I could find how much was spent on pre-K, how much was spent totally on the SSO program, how much was spent on, or the money to be the PBIS, which is their replacement of the D-Backs program. There's a lot of programs, all the information's there, that I'm not seeing any lines for. So in lieu of that, I stand by my $16,000 cut. If we can't see where our money's going, we are supposed to be the folks who are responsible for the monies that these residents entrust to us, then we need to be responsible citizens, responsible elected officials. And to be very honest with you, without knowing where our money's being spent, I don't know how I can be a responsible elected official. So I would implore this board that before we approve any money to the school system, that we actually get to see the budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been going through numbers as much as possible over the months since I've been on the board, and I haven't found justification, with all due respect, for such a large time. However, I also share many of the same concerns. As a parent in the valley with four children in the school district for many years, and I'm under this board, I remember getting emails every year saying that, gee, stingy people, which may mean the state, may mean you, I don't know, I get these emails from the school system, from the superintendent, if I remember correctly, saying they didn't give us enough money to meet our goal for teacher raises or buy school buses, et cetera. Seems to be an issue that was renewed every year. And as a parent, I've had the bus break down and wonder where my elementary school child is. It's quite concerning. So these are important things that get parents stirred up, and rightfully so. And I don't mean this entirely as a criticism. I greatly appreciate you, Nick, for meeting with Mr. Hester, and I want to say to Mr. Hester, I very much appreciate him for meeting and opening this discussion with real information. That's a great thing, and that's a good way forward. But with that said, if, if programs like the pre-K, at $6.1 million are being funded, and total, meeting the total need of something like new school buses could be met for far less than that, then that's a concern. And so far, there's been comments made from this board's point of view. But I want to say, as a parent, formerly time here, as a taxpayer's point of view, the taxpayers, it's, it's implicit that they expect to see things continue at a steady course, schools still being funded, et cetera, roughly at the same rate. And that if there's any big change up or down, that justification be well advertised. Any new programs are cut, or any new programs are started, the public wants to know, because they have to pay for them. So it's definitely a concern. If programs are getting started, I guess there was never a hearing at school board meetings, nor at board meetings here to go over that expenditure. And as Sean mentions, that is a concern. Those are things that taxpayers serve to hear. Maybe they want all these programs, but they deserve to hear it and contact us and let us know where they want that money allocated and spent. Let's keep up, you know, our, our job, speaking to the public in general, is to balance the county taxpayers' needs to keep some money with all the needs he wants to see out of the county. It's true that our student population is growing, and so there are increased needs for service and education. But it's also true that it's not growing at the same rate that the general population is. That suggests to me that, if, you know, elderly people without children are moving in more so than families with children, what would you expect out of that? We should do some analysis. You might think, just guessing, that the emergency services demand would be going up at a much greater rate than the school needs, just looking at the population growth. So looking at the data, and I appreciate Blaine's analysis from the last board meeting, the school district has been funded over the last 10 years, and that funding has grown at a rate much greater than inflation plus student growth. But many other of our services have not been growing at that rate. Some may have. I think to balance that, we should do that kind of analysis. And Mr. Ballhopper, maybe the administration should take that up, to look at the population that each department services, that growth rate, growth rate over the last 10 years, and see if we've been balancing those needs correctly. So now, with that said, maybe the school district needs to grow greater than the simple inflation plus student population rate there. You know, we're all talking about raising salaries so we don't lose our good personnel in all the departments. There are mandates, I've already been mentioned, that have come down that the school has to meet, that are above and beyond growth and simple cost of living inflation. There may be other programs that have been started that we need to, the school board to come and remind us of, so that we can appreciate it and plan that in. But given that I still see a whole lot of questions and uncertainty, I have a recommendation, I guess I'd like to be second to put out on the table to see if there's a consensus. And that is this, that this board did not scenario C, but modified significantly, that we provide school funding totaling $75,553,417, which is a number different from their request, lower than their request. The balance of those funds, I suggest we put in a reserve fund, so we can continue to study the needs of the county. Now, if we have a critical need to rise, like a chance to match funds in road building, then if we're about to save, we can earmark some of those funds for things like, we haven't put a single dollar in the roads in over a decade. But much of that money could remain in reserve. And so we continue to have these meetings, we've talked about, with different departments and with the schools. And, and could be restored to the schools, as we come to understand all these additional tasks that they've undertaken. And the public gets to hear those tasks and that spending. Even with that cut, that because Richmond has provided so much more funds this year, the overall school budget would still increase slightly. So, you know, we have that windfall opportunity here to use money if it's not justified inside the school system, or at least not at the same priority level on other needs, to divert that to other needs. And it allows us to be flexible in our spending in the next few months, as we look into all these issues. And I guess that was a little long. That's my, my opinion.
Okay. I'm going to ask the board to focus on the scenarios. And if anyone wants to offer up C2, okay, if I call it that. But we need to get Cheryl, she has to have a thought.
Just a point of clarification. I didn't, I didn't have time to write down the number that you, you're on $75 million, something, a change. Is that strictly local funding?
Yes. So the school is also receiving its state and federal.
With the conversations I've been having with Brian Hester and with the joint meeting that we've had, whatever this board does, if there are cuts, or if there are, it's not really a cut, but they've had more money in there last year, but if there's a reduction in local funding, I would have, it would have to be with the being set aside until they can come back and ask for more information. Because I feel like we're down, we're going down that road already. I'd like to continue and give them a benefit of that opportunity. So is your recommendation that all be set aside until the difference between C1 and C2, that be set aside, or then to come back and justify at some point in the near future?
Yes, unless this board sees critical need for some of this comes elsewhere. But otherwise, yes, set it aside for the.
All right. We currently have a, like, two scenarios, three scenarios. Personally, I think scenario A is the right one. I think they deserve it. I think they justify it. And B, nothing more important than our school system. We can continue to bear down details and discussions, but we need to let them move forward. Just my, just my opinion. Anyone else? Gary?
Again, just clarification. That was dropping $1 now down to $75 million. What was the over reduction?
I believe that our ask was, let me see, $97,553,417.
So we're looking to drop to $22 million.
Is it 22 or 22.5?
22.
22.
Thank you.
Those were on that.
Speak it, please.
Sure.
I don't believe the C2 is deep enough. I will support it. So I will do a C2.
Doug?
I'll go with C2.
And I'm supporting my own C2. But again, with the understanding that that money is put in reserve, so that we can understand the needs that we're all clear of.
Just a point. If this is.
C2 is the majority.
I think if I can make a form point, if the schools have an option to get this back, we need to act quickly, because the superintendent will need to set a budget sometime within the next month or so. So it's going to be incumbent on us to work hard with them in order to get some answers. And I think part of that's going to be understanding what that, what they're going, what's, what are we looking for. So I don't think we can wait two weeks to start coming up, or three months to start coming up, whatever it is that we want to see the board, it's fall back. I think that has to be something, because we're going to do this, has to be hashed off pretty darn quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My opinion starts for me with a completely transparent budget, where I can see where the $1 is going. If I can see the budget, I have time to look at it, digest it a little bit, and I think we can have conversations and dialogue along fairly quickly. But it has to be an open, transparent budget, where we can see where there's dollars going. That's where I'm coming from.
Gary?
Yeah, just a question for the board, C2, that the schools don't appease what you're looking for in time of matter. That $22 million, are you looking at that to be transferred to transportation or sent back to taxpayers?
If you're asking me, I think all board, yeah, but if you're asking me, I mean, I don't know what, I'm afraid to say the question. I think there are priorities that need to address. So I would be, I support abortion, or all of the coin, transportation, or some other, you know, high driver need. I think it'd be foolish of us at this point, with the number of needs that this county has, to just send money back to taxpayers, as much the taxpayer would love to get it back, I'm sure. We've got some needs here to do that. It's my, my.
That's the transportation issue is a key issue. So on a priority basis, that's the balance unit.
We have transportation in C.
It takes us more for that. That's the balance unit, Mr. Chairman.
What do you think?
So I have a few questions. So I need your actual number for transfer. Is it just a reduction of $22 million?
Yes.
That's transfer, $22 million. Capital. Each one of these scenarios, they have capital?
I would say it's C.
So you want to fully fund the capital? So you want to fully fund the capital?
So give us what you need, Mr. Chairman.
I think so. So your resolution next week will be on the 423 personal capital tax rate. It will fully fund the school capital. And it will reduce our operating request that is in the ad by $22 million. And order of this, at a later point, it'll have to be appropriated to be spent.
Just a question, so initially, is that set into a separate sort of account on the books? That sort of a link that would be appropriated?
No, we've not done this before, but we'll park it somewhere and I'll let you know.
Is it, is it possible to do similar to what we discussed with the additional personnel additions? Could say we appropriate this month or not going to fund it until this happens? Is that a way to do that or not?
So with the personnel positions, normally we would park it in a contingency line item for personnel. We'll probably create another line item for those and it'll be in the general file because it has to balance.
Okay, any other comments? Gary?
One, not that my vote matters, but y'all are the ones that voted for it. My preference is scenario B.
I'm sorry?
My preference is scenario B, is the fight, that's a good one.
Okay, Mr. Chairman? Anyone else? Kelly?
I don't want to get too far into the school situation, but over the years, I've had to learn that when you do those things, they don't time to work themselves out. There's contracts and things that that administration starts to put together in the very near future for FY2023. And I don't know what kind of impact that has on their process. Maybe Paul can speak to that. I was there once upon a time, the contracts were made. And looking for new teachers coming into the locality, if they don't have the funds, that's just going to stay, that entire process.
They can't go chasing after those if they don't have them.
Sean?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. To your point, Mr. Treger, I don't really care. They had four months to give us the documents we've asked. I have asked. At this point, eventually, your patients have to run dry. You ask for it, you be respectful about it, you try to get into the nuts and bolts of things to understand what they want. And if they actively refuse to give it to you, that's their problem. And so that's where I stand. But thank you very much.
Anyone else? Doug?
One comment, that would be to understand part of disdain for the schools. Some people part, understand mistrust, and some people part, but also know it's about the children. And I just hope that they're not punishing the kids or punishing the school board, which we've said a million times. We'll see what happens. And by the way, those contract agreements signed now.
Anyone else?
I don't need any dissonance.
I just, I don't want to, just wanted to say, I don't want any disdain for the school system, certainly not for the students.
Did you mention that?
I know. But I encourage the school system to get us any of their decision points, their needs. I'm sure there are mandates, there are costs for programs like pre-K having gone over the last 10 years for half-day, full-day kindergarten. All those numbers should be in hand. And when we see that, then we can easily understand why costs have risen above inflation, above student growth. And also, I'm sure that an increase in teacher pay scales in order to keep those teachers, it's something that the community, I think, approves of. So if we understand exactly how they've been doing that, then we can factor that in as well. That could be done in very short order.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Two things. First, I also like to respond, I don't understand either, I'm tired of being lied to. And so I think it's very important that we see the budget, we have to go over dialogue of that. A question I have, if we discuss the outside agencies, is that something we're going to discuss?
We did that last time.
We did, and we're going to come back to us with half-page responses. And I have not seen any half-page responses. And I just wanted to see where we stood on the actual numbers. Basically, you sent something out, I just didn't see anything. I don't see anything.
Mike, what I believe, Mr. Chairman, walked out. We scheduled that before those funds are going to be dispersed, so we're going to be bringing that back a later day.
You're seeing a motion? Motion to adjourn, sir, a second. Thank you everyone for their time and attention.